Hi.
Hi, I don't know what happened.
It was arrested again.
I had trouble joining, I had to keep typing in the number and then I had to get the ID and get promoted.
Kelly. Kelly's eyes, you just. All right, let's get, let's get the party started. Kelly, you there? Kelly Wenstrup? Is she on the screen? Yeah, she's right there, she's just, she probably stepped away from my desk. Ross Pozzino's on as well. All right, it's five o'clock. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Village of Merrick, Board of Trustees Work Session for November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. Okay, first item on the agenda is adoption of agenda. Open the meeting, I need a motion, open the meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I just want to say I had trouble getting on and that might be what's happening with Victor too.
Can we just check the attendees? No. Okay. He's not here right now. If you want to adopt the agenda, somebody's gonna need to make a motion.
So moved.
I need a second. Second. We'll call a roll. Trustees Wenstrup?
No.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? No. So we just go with the agenda as it is?
Well. How do we, I mean, that's a question, if we haven't adopted it, how do we go with it?
I don't know, let's just not have a meeting?
I don't know.
This, this, this is, this is the silliness of putting this on.
I think it points out that this adoption of agenda is not necessary and it doesn't do anything, it doesn't do anything, Nora.
Well, it does if the agenda is wrong and we can make a change, so.
Okay, we always make a change by amending the agenda.
Okay. First item on the agenda is enforcement of multiple dwelling law. Mr. Sonoff? Jared, Gary is not gonna be here tonight, I've been led to understand. And I did not know that until we walked in the room here. So Dan, it's up to you and I'm sorry to, this has been foisted upon you at the last second.
Not a problem, this is, this is an item I'm still working on, it's a pretty comprehensive item that's been asked for, so I don't have this item just yet.
Okay, you know what, in the future, when we're preparing the agenda, right? If, if it, if it's not, if the, if the research hasn't been done, let's just note that in parentheses next to the item.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, item one B, use of American Rescue Plans Funds.
This is an item that the board has been reviewing for the past several meetings about how to use the funds, I think there was talk about setting up some sort of program to support affordable housing. One of the items I was asked to look at was whether other communities have used the rescue plan funds for salary plaque from bonuses for essential personnel. I attached some responses to the board agenda. The communities that responded, New Rochelle, I believe, is looking at it. The Village of Scarsdale used the funds to reinstate increases for CSCA staff and non-union staff that were cut as part of their COVID-nineteen budget in two thousand and twenty. But that's where we, that's the information I was able to glean on that item, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, anybody on the board have any suggestions for this?
Well, go ahead, Dan.
Oh, go ahead, Doug.
Well, I was just gonna say, Dan, thanks really for reaching out to these other municipalities. I noticed that other, you know, some other municipalities, Larchmont and Buchanan are using it for wastewater sanitaries who are infrastructure projects.
That's correct, Deputy Mayor, and I think that was one of the items that we had included in the original memo back in June.
Yeah, thank you.
For uses for the funds.
Yeah, thanks, Dan.
What, I was gonna say that at our last meeting, I was concerned about using this for capital improvements, capital projects that we might otherwise not get to because of priority, et cetera, or funding issues. You know, that were, you know, that are desired. We lost a lot of equipment in the, you know, in Ida. You know, I don't have all the numbers together, but you know, it's sizable. Dan, how, how many trucks did we lose and we lost the fire engine or not, or is that been rehabilitated?
We haven't lost any fire apparatus, I'm aware.
Okay.
There were lots of trucks that sustained damage just from floodwaters. We're still calculating that. What we're looking to do is, at some point in December, talk with the board and go over the capital request that we want to make in terms of mitigation and long-term response. But, you know, we're still working on the numbers and it's, it's in the hundreds of thousands, if not millions, just on equipment.
So what, if I just can follow up on that, Kelly, if you don't mind. One of the, one of the big things is going to be the cost of the sidewalk on Old Post Road, which appears not to be able to be funded by other grants, at least that's what we will have been led to believe to date. And if that's the case, something like this could help with, you know, that type of funding, and I think that's very important.
Just to point out, the trucks and stuff that we lost during the flood, we should be reimbursed by FEMA for that, shouldn't we, Dan?
Whatever insurance doesn't cover, we expect FEMA to cover.
That, that was my question, that was my question, thanks.
Um. We got, we'd also talked about trying to use some of the money to seed some affordable housing.
Yes.
And I think that's something we should keep discussing, and I also think that while we're talking about infrastructure, um, one of the things we could, we should talk about is storm sewers. Because I know that we are repairing, you know, our sanitary sewer, we also know that people are putting water into the sanitary sewer in big rain events. And I know from time to time, we've been asked about storm sewers on certain streets, and I think maybe that's something we should also see if we can leverage some matching grants to what's available out there, like if our, if our, if our grant consultant could look for some grant opportunities for storm sewers that we might be able to use a little bit of this to match with.
Yeah, that, well, that kind of ties into item one M, and like Mary, that's the County Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Part of the, I don't want to speak about that now, Mr. Mayor, or.
No, let's stay on this topic, let's stay on one topic at a time.
Okay.
Thank you, though. I, I think I agree to, you know, some of this should be used to seed affordable housing. Maybe we should come up with a kind of a percentage, it's, you know, this much maybe go to employees, this much go to a capital, to, you know, at least partially fund a capital project. You know, like, maybe twenty-five, 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 twenty-five. Now, I just threw that out there, that, that's not a, but if, if staff would wanna take the priorities that have been mentioned and see what would actually make them, I mean, to, to put enough into a priority to make a dent and to make it worthwhile to fund that priority, maybe that would be the next step. Because I don't want, you know, I don't want to throw ten thousand dollars to something that's not gonna do anything, right?
No, but that's one of the reasons I suggested the sidewalk and Old Post Road, which is going to be very significant, the preliminary estimates, you know, were high six figures to seven figures.
Right, but there's, there's other priorities that have been mentioned here, like, oh, you know, about, you know, making our employees whole and also about affordable housing, it, it doesn't mean that we can't do all three. And it doesn't mean that we shouldn't do all White Plains Road if we don't fund it exclusively with this. Because, you know, borrowing money is very cheap right now. Kelly, you had your hand up?
Yeah, you know, in terms of making our employees whole, the municipalities that I saw were doing that, it looks like they were making up for things that they had cut, and I, so I would just ask, you know, staff for information on, you know, what, how, how were our employees cut or not made, you know, what, what would it take to make them whole for the COVID response situation? But so.
Cutting anybody.
Well, that's, that's kind of my point.
We, we didn't cut, what we did do is we suspended six, I remember, something like six positions which have now been funded.
That was with, I think what Kelly may be referring to is the, not the twenty-one, twenty-two budget which was adopted earliest this year, which we had the positions on hold, but the two thousand and twenty-one budget, which was filed by the manager on March twentieth, that was, we made changes to that budget in advance of the June one, two thousand and twenty, beginning of the fiscal year. I, what I seem to recall is that we we, we, we provide the contractual increases for PBA and CSCA, but with the non-union staff, I, I think that we have proposed to, I think the board may have adopted one percent, but I have to go back and look at the resolutions.
Yes, yes, I can tell you exactly what happened. We, we, we were talking about two percent, but it, because we were afraid of what would happen with COVID, we only gave one percent. We were gonna review it after six months, and we never reviewed it, so those employees that year just got a one percent raise.
That's right, so this would be non-union employees looking for a, you know, making up a one percent. Right?
That, that's what happened.
Yeah, that, that's, that's my memory as well, I mean, Scarsdale was, they referred to it as a COVID austerity because they did not give the, their non-union staff the standard two percent, they didn't even give it to CSEA.
And, and one percent of non-union staff is not gonna be a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, they were the ones who were penalized.
They were the ones who were penalized, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe a lump sum for them.
Yeah, yeah, or, you know, how, I mean, we can figure out whether a lump sum makes sense or a lump sum that somehow brings their salaries up so that when the next get a two percent raise, it's off that number, but however we do it.
Right, accumulative.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But yeah, I think sharing, sharing the funds in some different pots is worthwhile, and I agree with you, Tom, that, you know, make sure it's meaningful.
So staff can work on that.
Good problem to have.
Yeah, right, exactly, Nora.
I mean, I had one, I had wondered if, you know, I don't know what we're gonna do long-term about outdoor dining, but it may be that, you know, we want to look at that and, and look at a more attractive solution than cement blocks in the avenue, that may be another way to use a few, a few COVID funds. Just, just an idea.
So is the consensus that we take it off the agenda until we've got a plan back from staff?
Yes. I think you need to leave it on the agenda so we don't forget what it slide and just simply say awaiting staff.
Right, just without backup because it's two hundred and fifty-five pages.
They don't have to print it out every week.
Yeah.
Great, that's how we left it.
Just, just, with, Dan, you, you have an idea of what we're driving at here?
Yeah, I think there are, you know, four to six categories that the board is
Okay.
asking us to take a look at.
And, yeah, the, make, and, and in terms of the employees, the employees who only got a one percent raise in the year of COVID, what would it take to bring them up to two percent?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, oh lordy. Okay, full-time village attorney recruitment, Nora, are you looking at this?
Yeah, so I, I, we've got, we've got one proposal from someone and we've got a couple of other like expressions of interest, and so what we're gonna have to do, since it's really discussing a contract and how these people bill, I think we have to sort of set up a meeting to discuss this.
Nora, did you send us the?
I'll send you the one I have, and I've just talked to a couple of other people, I'm waiting for them to put something in writing, we've gotten one proposal. So I'll circulate that and I'll circulate it with maybe some dates that we can all get together to talk.
Does this need to be a separate meeting, can we just have this as part of a work session discussion?
It could be, I mean, it could be part of the work session discussion in two weeks, although because we can't put the proposals out, you know what I'm saying? Because it's, it could affect some, we can't circulate the proposals because it's somebody's contract, proposed contract before other people make a proposal, does that make sense?
So we could, we could do it in executive session in two weeks.
Have to do it in executive session, so we could, let's have it, I'll have, let's do it in two weeks in an executive session.
Okay.
But please forward it as soon as you can.
Well, I can't forward what I don't have, I can only forward what I have.
Right, but you have, right?
I got one, yep.
Okay. Filling vacancies on expired terms. Let Mrs. Pozzino talk about that for a minute.
There, you have the proposed law before you. As we promised, I have also prepared a privileged and confidential memo to the board with regard to this issue, if you, the board wants me to discuss that publicly, I'll be happy to, but you'd have to waive the privilege in order for me to do that.
I'm fine with waiving a privilege.
Me too.
I have no objection.
Okay.
That's fine.
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay, so in preparing this law and in finalizing the draft, I went back and did one more check of the law, and I identified an opinion from the Attorney General in nineteen seventy-three, which says that the board does not have the authority to pass a local law transferring the authority to make appointments from the mayor to the Board of Trustees. Now, as I explained in my memo, I believe that opinion is internally inconsistent and incorrect because it ignores the authority under section ten-one E-three of the municipal home rule law to adopt a local law relating to the property affairs regarding the village, notwithstanding that such provision is a general law. The text of the opinion was that the provision that says the mayor makes these appointments a general law and you can't supersede this, but that's what municipal home rule law ten-one E-three says. The opinion goes on, talk about being inconsistent with the Constitution. Constitution only says that the legislature shall make provision for the appointment of vacancies, and the legislature made provision for the village to supersede as, as well as its general appointment power. So I don't see how this opinion is right, but it is an opinion from the Attorney General, I wanted to bring it to your attention.
And, do we know if that community ever took the power away from the mayor?
Do not know.
Go ahead, Nora.
I, I, you know, I, I just, it occurred to me that Portchester has done so because they are, they, it's the Board of Trustees that appoints the, the mayor, and they're in that position right now.
What a trustee's appoints the mayor.
If the mayor resigns and in this.
If the mayor resigns, but that's not what we're talking about here.
That's the village law, the village law says that the
That's village law.
trustees makes that appointment.
All right, yeah, yeah.
And how did the mayor appoint this?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the, not the mayor, the mayor, the, one of the trustees became mayor in the village of Portchester, and so the Board of Trustees is now doing their appointment replacement, not the mayor.
But the mayor has the authority, he might, he might be asking for advice, but he has the authority.
I don't think that's the case.
I
I, I, I think that's been the discussion in Portchester.
Portchester is also a charter of village. They may be swinging the charter.
So, so I have a question, Bob, does it, does it make sense in light of the nineteen seventy-three AG opinion to make sure that we're doing this right and not contradicting that opinion to go to the AG and, you know, point out these inconsistencies and ask for another opinion on this?
I can do that, if the board would like me to do so.
I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, it's just a matter of making sure if we go forward with this and we're putting it on the ballot that it be, you know, something that we know and have checked is valid, because I would hate to put something on the ballot that there is exist, an existing opinion saying we can't do. It just seems to invite litigation after it passes, if it passes.
You, you, we maybe ask them if their opinion has changed in light of what Bob has. I, I, I tend to agree, I don't, listen, I'll be honest, I don't want this law to pass, I think it's not needed, but I tend to agree with the opinion that we, that the board can do it. But I think Kelly's right. You know, if, you don't, you don't wanna go to halfway down the road and make people vote on something and then have it overturned. So what was, what do we say at work? Measure twice, cut once.
I mean, I don't think, for the, and, and I'm not in favor either, but for those of the members who are in favor, I don't think that, you know, seeking an AG opinion or advice on this would postpone it in such a way that it wouldn't make it onto the ballot in November.
It's like you're out of the town.
Right, I, I think there's time to do this, I mean, if you were running up against a deadline, I think you could, you know, reexamine.
Do it simultaneously.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to stall this in a way that will keep it off the ballot, that's not my intention.
That's not even my intention.
Okay.
So, Bob, you wanna handle it up?
If the board would like me to do that, I can do that.
That's what I'm hearing.
Thank you.
Rental registry.
You know, reexamine.
Do it simultaneously.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to stall this in a way that will keep it off the ballot, that's not my intention.
That's not even mine.
Am I hearing like a replay of this?
Yeah.
So, you wanna handle it up?
If the board would like me to do that, I can do that.
Let, let's, let's, let's all fix this, what happened?
Thank you.
Trying to figure it out.
One second.
Reexamine. Yeah.
Thanks, okay, we think it's fixed now. It's weird, but I hate myself. Rental registration program. Jerry was gonna, gonna form a committee, and I believe he, he reached out to people, but he's not here, so I am assuming that we don't have anything, is that right, Dan?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, all right, so in, in the future, Dan, at, at, at the agenda meeting, let's just, stuff like this, where we're not ready yet, just, you know, in parentheses, staff's still working on, you know what I mean, just a little explanation, so that we can, okay, thank you very much. Want to have constant and intentional harassment of staff, this is the one that I brought up before. Nora asked me to read vamp it, I revamped it. I'll read what I revamped. Whereas the Village of Merrick, since its inception in eighteen ninety-five, has been fortunate to be served by excellent employees and staff. Whereas the staff who currently serve the village from the, from the manager, department heads, and all the employees are perhaps the finest public servant, servants that Merrick has ever had in its employ. Whereas these employees have gone above and beyond what duty demands during the last seventeen, sixteen months during a COVID crisis. Whereas some of these employees have been subject, subjected to unwarranted criticism by members of the community. Therefore, the board feels it is imperative to voice our support for all of our employees. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Merrick rejects the unkind infected that our staff has been subjected to and voices of support, admiration and appreciation for both senior staff and all who serve our residents. That, that is as innocuous as I can make it while still saying something.
I think it's a little vanilla, nonetheless, I will support it, I wish it were more on the one, two, three, fourth, where at, third whereas, where it speaks of the sixteen months during the COVID, I would suggest we add and Ida. And that we change the word crisis to crises, but.
And the September two thousand and twenty-one Idaho hurricane crisis.
That's fine. Or disaster.
Two thousand and twenty-one, that's two thousand and one. Anybody in the board?
Okay.
I have requested advice of Labor Council for this.
For this, you never said it was for this?
I did.
No, you never said it was for this.
I did.
No. Check your email.
Check, check my email.
It wasn't sent.
Check my email. That's what it says.
You sent it, so it's at your fingertips, can you tell us, because I didn't think it was on this, I think it was on.
I said about.
It was about an email that Stuart sent today.
No, it was about this. I can look at it, but I know exactly what I wrote.
Yeah, please.
Hold on, well, well, let's look.
I, I, it was very specific. So anyway, I, and in any event, I, I, of course, I gave you the courtesy of giving you my, my, my tip, but I, I, I would require advice of council, lay of labor council for this matter, it has precautions for the village and I, that's my main role here too.
Okay, I, I, I can tell exactly what you said, thanks, Mike. I would like advice of council for this matter as well as the harassment matter for today at five PM and not, and not just let us know what time is good for you between five and seven. You didn't say anything about this matter on the agenda?
Well, this is it.
But.
This is what I was referring to.
That was, that was not clear at all.
I think I, I did see another, I was gonna follow up and I did see some follow-up, I think it was by trustee. I, I saw some follow-up, I mean, tried to track it down, I've been out.
Okay, I have it here. Trustee Lucas just said agreed. Kelly Wenstrup talked about another matter.
I.
Victor has asked for advice of council. Okay, so we. He's entitled, any, any board member. He, he wants a specific lawyer who's not here. Well, then we postpone it till we can do this.
Is Jackson Lewis coming sometime between five and seven, did anyone hear?
I, I asked, I sent an email saying that Victor had asked for advice of council, that I didn't see anything, I asked him if he had seen different emails that we were referring to. You know, for the, that were on the agenda and off the agenda, have not heard back from him, so I don't know.
All right, but that suggests too that, Dan, you didn't, you thought it was about various emails, not about this resolution that was pending.
Well.
Kelly.
Yeah.
Resolution was on the agenda. Excuse me, Tom. Any board member has the right to ask for advice of council. Tom did it at our last meeting and everything stopped till that was done. So if the council is not here, we'll postpone it and we have to arrange it and be done with it, period. So if the council is not here, we'll postpone it and we have to arrange it and be done with it, period. I, I don't.
No, that's fine. It's fine. But all I'm pointing out is that it was not apparent from the email that this was what it was about.
This has been on the agenda since Friday.
And, and I just want to point out that of course, anyone can ask for advice of council at any time. But that, you know, generally anticipates that the advice of council is village council. This is a special thing. And we needed to make arrangement for a particular council who, you know, is not village council to give us the advice. And had we known that this was the item we were seeking advice on, we could have adjusted the agenda or made sure that we, you know, it's just, there needs to be some clarity what we're asking for because this isn't the typical, let's seek advice of council and you go off with Bob into a corner. That's not what we're doing tonight.
So let me, let me be clear. Victor's asked for it on this. I would like advice of council uh, on the emails of the, that, uh, that were on the agenda, off the agenda. Uh, and the emails that had to do with, um, that had the long email exchange today.
Just want to clarify that my email went to labor council.
So, I, you know, so there, from my vantage point, there are three items that are somewhat connected but not interconnected. That we should do this at, you know, at the earliest possible date that we can.
Well, they're all for two weeks. Not have a special meet, Chris.
Nora, your hand was up. Were you gonna say something? Yeah, I, because the topic, you know, F was harassment. And so when Victor sent the email, I assumed he was referring to the topic on the agenda. So I think we all made different assumptions about what Victor was saying. And, you know, that's on all of us to communicate better.
But it, it, it was on the agenda since Friday and it, Victor's emails was in response to something that happened this morning. So it wasn't apparent to me.
Oh. Reasonable people can disagree.
One G, county project resurfaced in America. We, what do we hear from the county?
Uh, well, that. I think where we left off, we talked about, uh, getting an update for the meeting in December from, uh.
AKRF.
AKRF, I'm sorry. Uh, so I have been dealing with them to get all the updates on the various, uh, projects that we have out there. Uh, this has kind of been, uh, consumed with the topic, just general traffic safety projects in general.
Okay, so we don't have, we.
Again, again, I thought we were gonna discuss this again at the first meeting in December with AKRF. That was, that was what the result was in the last meeting.
They're, they're coming to the first meeting in December.
I will arrange that.
And I, and I, I bet Dan is gonna say the same thing and Tom too, because we were all at that town hall on, um, or the conversation on Friday in Washingtonville. But, um, there was conversation about concern with crossing at these time lights and that um, there, but there is a, a real need to ex- uh, explore and hopefully install an all-way stop. So that all of the traffic stops at the same time, so that pedestrians don't have to navigate cars coming in two directions.
Yeah, and that's what, uh, you talk about the way, I assume with the waverly intersection. Is that what you're referring to, trustee Lucas?
Yes.
And, and that's what I have asked AKR, AKRF to look at.
Okay, just a minute, for three months, I've been asking for this. I, I know everybody is burdened with lots of things, but I'm, you know, it keeps coming up and I keep asking for it. Uh, and I, I would like it based upon what I heard the other night. I think we probably need to expand that to quite as well.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask them to look at that as well.
Also, I guess, could we just reiterate that although it's frustrating for everyone that it's taking a long time, this project is not going to start till June because the county is not gonna do it until school's out of session.
Yeah.
So this discussion is not delaying any resurfacing. I know we've done some repainting, although it doesn't look great, doesn't, it, it, it doesn't look very freshly painted, but that the actual project won't start till June.
Okay. And also we have the, uh, we're waiting for AKRF for the information for Fenimore and Prospect, so we can get started on that project.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, I thought that was gonna be, no, whatever. Okay, vaccination policy. Uh, where, where are we with this? Uh, what was, uh, we're waiting on federal government?
Well, um, internally, we've requested information uh, from staff on vaccination, stat, vaccination status. Uh, but obviously the, uh, the OSHA guidance has been held up at the federal, uh, court level. Uh, and OSHA has indicated they're not gonna, uh, make any movement on uh, their guidance until I believe it's fully adjudicated, uh, at the federal level. But, uh, internally, we've.
I'm confused. A letter was sent out saying that you are, you were requested, that you were required to provide the vaccinations, your vaccination status. Okay, was this being required, is this required by OSHA or by the village or a combination? Let's not talking about whether you are required to get vaccinated. That was not, that's not the question.
So, uh, the internal, uh, request for information. I mean, at this point, it's a village request, um, because OSHA is not implementing their guidance at this point. So there, there is no OSHA requirement for that information right now. Uh, but there, there's two.
I'm sorry, OSHA has no guidance about asking for the status or, or about getting the shots. Those are two different issues.
Um, I, when I reviewed the, uh, the summary of the guidance, I didn't see anything in there about uh, requirement for status information, just that, uh, employees had to get it if they worked in an organization of one hundred or more. Uh, but part and parcel of requiring employees to, uh, have the required, part of, and parcel of the employer making sure their employees are uh, vaccinated would be getting that information. It's a little confusing, but you can't do one without the other.
It's, it, it read to me like Danielle just trying to get a handle on, well, what are, what are we dealing with?
Yep. But, but the, the short version is, um, there is no, uh, given that the OSHA rule is on hold. Uh, there's not, there's nothing, the village isn't pursuing a vaccine requirement at this time.
But the village has to be ready.
You're correct.
Have to be ready if the court says the ruling is in effect and we might, it might be a tight timeframe.
That's correct. I mean, the original rule, uh, had sixty days in which it was to be implemented. We came out on, uh, was it, uh, uh, November fourth? And had to be fully implemented by January fourth or it was October, November sixth and January sixth, but it was a very tight timeframe to, uh, get the implementation done.
Dan, Dan, do you, do you need, are there any policy questions involved in this that it would make sense to talk about so that you can meet the sixty-day deadline?
Well, I mean, if, if, if it's an OSHA requirement, we're bound to comply with it, uh, based on.
I guess I'm wondering things like, you know, can we ask, you know, unvaccinated employees to pay for their own testing and do the testing on their own time?
Uh, I believe that was.
And do we want to do that? You know, is that the type of thing?
Uh, there was, uh, information, I believe in the summary and the articles I've read that, uh, dealt with uh, getting tested, which I believe was not, it, we were under no requirement to provide paid time off for testing. Uh, we are required, uh, to provide paid time off for someone to get a vaccination.
Yes, yes.
So that, that, that was, I think there were, that was information I did glean from articles and the, and the executive summary. So, you know, if, if there's a question about would we want to offer, uh, paid time off uh, for people to get tested, that, that's a, uh, that, that is a policy question, not, but nothing that uh, from what I've seen that we'd be required to do.
I guess our question, my question is, do you need anything from the Board of Trustees now to prepare for the possibility of, of you needing to comply with the vaccine mandate in sixty days' notice?
Um, I, I don't believe so. Uh, when this item was first put on the agenda, uh, we were still waiting for the guidance from OSHA. So we didn't know what was, uh, what was gonna be the final result at that time. So uh, we just wanted to let the board know at, back in, uh, I think we originally had this in August. Uh, what, what was going on in the vaccination requirement, uh, world as it related to uh, local governments and, uh, the mandate for, uh, were employers with one hundred or more employees.
Okay.
I think it's amazing that, you know, we can, uh, you know, an, an employee can refuse a free shot, uh, and then you know, be, be out unlimited sick time. And, uh, yeah, and, and, it, it, you know, the cost to the community, uh, is, is just so exorbitant. Nothing, and, and plus, you don't want to see somebody get sick. You don't want to see anybody die. It was just, you know. Amazing to me. It's amazing to me that people just won't get vaccinated. Unless they have a medical reason for not getting vaccinated. But it is what it is. Item one, zoning strategies to encourage and support all affordable housing developments. So when I did this, I just want to emphasize the all. Uh, my idea was that, you know, we would do something to help facilitate just developments that did exclusively affordable housing, not, uh, partially affordable, uh, not, uh, ten percent or twenty percent, but just places that did all affordable. Uh, because it, it obviously gets you more housing and it gets you a wider range of, uh, income distribution in the affordable range. Uh, people who do the ten percent or the twenty percent, they're really just looking for the people, uh, at the eighty percent median. But the people who do all affordable can get you the eighty percent, the sixty percent and the forty percent. Uh, because they have other ways to carry cost of the building and they're not looking to make an absorbent profit. So I just want to preface this discussion with that. That's really, you know, what I put this on the agenda for. Uh, was, was to look at the all affordable. Uh, I, I know there are people who are willing to help with this. There's the Mamaronek Affordable Housing, uh, Task Force, Neil DeSey said he would do it for free. Uh, he would volunteer to help us. So that, before we get opening up the discussion, I just want to point out that that's where I was with this. Have we got any other new information, Dan?
Uh, no, I, maybe I was only there for, at the last two minutes of this discussion at the prior work session and, uh, be in court that day, so I, I didn't get a, a full flavor of the conversation.
Okay, and, uh, you know, I, I, I don't want to be in a spot because you, you know, uh, you weren't expecting to take the first seat here tonight. You weren't taking the first seat.
Yeah.
Okay.
Doing a great job.
Thank you.
Uh, so unless others have stuff to add, I would hold this off.
No, I, I, I mean, I think there's a lot more research that can be done. There are a lot of communities that have done this. I'm taking that Lula. You know, it was the Pace Land Use Seminar on Affordable Housing and it's, you know, almost a little over half over now. Um, and I'll, you know, at the end of that, I can bring back some other strategies, but I think, um, in trying to create a, a building that's a hundred percent affordable, um, it may be less about zoning strategies because we have granted that, you know, extra floor. We've given, we've, 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 we've given a good incentive and more about, um, helping create the environment by seeding the pot a little bit to make sure there's a piece of property that can be. Cause that's really what's holding back. So
Yep.
We, most effective tool may be trying to use some of this, um, COVID relief funding or COVID.
I agree with you. So let's, let's keep it on the agenda. Uh, sewer rent fee.
Yep, uh, as I spoke with the board, uh, a couple of months back. Uh, the Westchester Joint Water Works is, uh, changing their billing system. Uh, and they've asked the village to reconsider the formula for how, uh, we arrive at our sewer rent fee, uh, which is the, the fee that's tacked onto the water bill uh, for the water that goes into the sewer system that we maintain. Uh, the board asked me to look at a couple of options and run some, uh, analyses of how we can uh, develop a, a, a fee that is consistent with how other communities do it and raises the revenue that's needed. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, my initial recommendation was doing something similar to how uh, the town of Mamaronek does it, which is to, uh, they uh, establish a fee based on, I think it's ninety percent of the annual water consumption, so that accounts for the heavier water use during the summer uh, associated with irrigation systems. Cause that water just goes into the ground and percolates, it's not going to the sanitary sewer system. So I'm still looking at some of those options and some of those, uh, formulas to generate the revenue that, uh, we budgeted past several years.
So, it's, it's just how we collect the revenue on, on what we've already budgeted.
Correct. Yeah.
It's not increasing the budget amount.
Correct. The, um, the reason the waterworks asked us to look at this is because to, it's so it's like a little Rube Goldberg-esque in.
They, they want, they, they want uniformity.
Yeah, but I think they said it would cost like ten thousand dollars a year to write a, a proper skip script in their software system to allow us to collect the money using the fee we have, the formula we have right now. But I'd like to have a recommendation for the.
So Dan, I'm, I'm confused. You're saying the village has one way of doing it. The town has another way of doing it. Uh, what does Harrison do?
I, I think it's kind of like, uh, somewhere in the middle of how, uh, uh, the town of Mamaronek and Harrison does it. Uh, most communities usually, uh, uh, use a formula like the town of Mamaronek because, uh, the, the granularity of trying to get down to the uh, nth degree of the water that's going into the sanitary sewer system as opposed to the water that's going from irrigation systems into the ground is, is very difficult. But, uh, so that's why I, so what I've seen most is the, you just charge a flat percentage. You charge a fee based on a percentage of the total use. Which is, uh, kind of the, uh, uh, the KISS method of, uh, of determining the fee.
So what you're, you're saying is if, that the town does not take, charges a uniform fee every month regardless of what is in the ground. You know, what it's using for some irrigation or not. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Well, that, no, wait, wait, but just, just to clarify, that doesn't mean everybody pays the same amount. You pay based upon your water usage and everybody gets ten percent of their water free. Uh, I, I understand that. I did, would you, the question you asked, I'm, I'm glad you understand. The question you asked wasn't clear. I just want to make sure the question is clear. Yep, but it's a, it's a straight fee. You know, that is set and it's charged throughout the, uniformly throughout the twelve months. So, you know, that, whatever that fee is, is what, is what I'm hearing. Correct? So, you know, that whatever that fee is, is what it's what I'm hearing. Correct?
Yes, it's a per CCF of water used fee.
Yeah. So, you know, if you use a hundred gallons, it's, and let's assume the fee is five percent for the sake of discussion, would be a hundred times five, uh, five, if you.
Actually, no.
No, two hundred times, correct?
It would, it would be eighty percent of a hundred times point five or point zero five.
All right. So you'll you'll have more information for us next week, a three-week service?
Yep.
All right. The USGS river gauges?
Uh, I reached out to the USGF. I just have not heard back yet.
What 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 is the holdup with them?
Well, I only reached out to them, I think it was last week. So it's been only a couple of days and, you know, we had a holiday last week, so.
Okay, we held this over till we hear from you.
Yep.
All right. Salary ranges for budget positions. Then it matches. This was you. I don't understand this.
Oh, Jerry.
No, it was Dan Ashes, wasn't it?
No, it was.
I I put it on. I put it on. So what we do is when somebody leaves, what, you know, um, you know, a department head or any, what I'll call non-union employee at the moment. And then I'll get to the others later. Um, you know, whatever this, whatever the salary was that was being paid to the person's leave, it's paid to the person who's hired. Um, and I'm, you know, in industry, uh, and outside, you know, and and I know when other governments and I know this, uh, I know that civil service has ranges for every conceivable position. Um, so the question is, if, you know, somebody has been with the village, uh, you know, and as a department head, you know, for numerous years, um, and it's getting a very high salary because of all that experience and tenure, et cetera. Um, when you hot, when you put somebody else in that, I'm not sure that that should transfer, you know, dollar for dollar. So there should be ranges. We don't have that in the budget. Uh, it's just a budget number. And it seems to me that, you know, uh, I don't have problems with what people are being paid. I'm just suggesting that when somebody leaves, we don't necessarily put them so somebody new at the same salary. May or may not, but that should be a decision based upon the qualifications, et cetera, longevity, but.
I don't, I don't think we do that. Are we, or do we? Because I know that when Jerry has talked to us in the past, he said, you know, he has talked about the savings from, you know, older, uh, more people who had been with the village with more tenure.
But that didn't, that didn't occur. Yeah, I I I think I could point to, I don't want to talk about anybody in particular, but I think I can point to department heads, uh, recent that it had occurred.
Yeah.
Uh, and also you don't put a range in a budget. You put the actual amount in the budget. Come up with ranges in a budget.
Um, and I, you know, Deputy Mayor, I can assure you, I did not get paid uh, the same as the incumbent when I started here. I was thinking about twenty percent less than, uh, the incumbent in in my position. Um, you know, it's something I did discuss, we did discuss with the board um, several years ago. I don't think anyone on this board was there at the time. Uh, the question came up and, uh, we mentioned, what about, we could do something like a higher, a firm to do like a, uh, salary and wage benefit plan for non-union positions. I think, uh, the city of Wright has something similar. I think the village of Scarsdale has something similar. Uh, if that's something that the board wants us to to look at, we can, we can certainly do that.
I I think what usually happens when we hire somebody who's non, non-represented is that there's a negotiation between the employee and the village manager and they get an awful letter.
That's correct. Yeah, I think I think the last time we hired a department head uh, at the same salary as the incumbent was when, uh, Chief Wayhe was hired to replace Chief Flynn. But that was because New York State law at the time mandated that a new chief had to earn the same salary as the retiring chief.
I I think this goes to the discretion of the village manager in hiring and firing, uh, your non-represented employees. Well, y- yes and no, but it has to do with the budget as well. We 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 have to approve the final hire, uh, the final budget. We don't. We have not approved a final hire of any department head. No, the final budget, you know, we approve the budget. Yes, and so you have a budget number. So whatever the, so if a department head leaves at X dollar, the the budget number is X dollars. It's just, it, you know, period. That's what the budget shows. Yes, so what what's the point? I just went through what the point was. But 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 apparently that's not happening. So I don't understand. Well, if it's not happening, I'm unaware of that and I'd love to see it.
But we 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 talk about it when it happens.
No, we don't. We are told this is what has been, we many times we're just not told at all. Oh, well, let 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 me just be clear. It's it's not, you you you're you're skating in another area. There has not been a change or a hire or an add-on that had not been discussed with this board before. That's not true, sir. That is true and it had, and you have alleged it before and it it had been pointed out to you where it had been discussed. And just because you're repeating it again, doesn't mean that that's any more true than the last time. You, I'm happy to go through it.
That, I, you know, I think we're getting into the danger about talking about, you know, individual positions.
That's why I'm not going there.
We shouldn't be doing that.
Well, that's why I'm not going there either. But but what we're talking about here is is an allegation that has been refuted already.
I I.
That goes to the village manager.
Tom, it may be that you're aware when there are new people hired. I don't know if the entire Board of Trustees made aware of it and I don't, maybe that's what the policy needs to be, but, you know, I've heard recently there are a couple of new people who've been hired and I didn't know about it. I'm not, it's it's up to Jerry. I mean, it's his, it's his responsibility. But I think that's a different part of the conversation. Obviously, obviously, if we have lost a very senior person at a high salary, what we want to do is hire a more junior and and we find a qualified junior person. We want to make sure that they're hired at, you know, a commensurate rate with their skills. I mean, that's just prudent for the village. That's what businesses do. That's what everybody, and I think that's what we're doing.
And 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 that that is the negotiation that the village manager has in the awful letter that is given. I just want to point out that when this came up during budget time, it was pointed out when the discussions were had about when we were adding people and and when the village manager, let me finish, Norm, stop interrupting. We, when, when the village manager explained that during a budget process and then it appeared in a budget and folks didn't remember that it had been explained.
I don't, that's not, that's not what I think Dan's talking about and that's not what I was.
That's when, that was the genesis of this.
It's not creating new positions. It's when new people are hired to in a position that's vacant. Somebody has left or somebody new that comes. That's, that's sometimes, so when new people are on boarded for an existing position, sometimes that doesn't get communicated. I think that's what Dan was trying to say.
That is not what Dan was saying. Dan was talking about creating new positions.
But it is just as far as non-union personnel, I I don't, I'm not aware of any instance where we've hired uh, a non-union employee at a salary higher than what the incumbent was making.
Wasn't suggesting that, Dan. Then I'm saying this hired other, it's I'm, I'm under the understanding that we've hired on non-represented people at the same level that the departing person was at.
And I I I can't speak to every single non-union employee over the last several years, but, um, they're.
But but the the issue that I'm raising is a budgetary issue, which is our responsibility.
Well, I mean, the the board of, uh, provides the appropriation for the salary. Uh, the, the, once the salary is appropriated, uh, the manager can hire the, an employee up to the budget appropriation. He can't go above that, but he can, if in the manager's, uh, uh, discretion, he believes that the non-employee merits a certain salary that's within the manager's discretion. If there's, if if the board wants to establish a policy that the manager cannot hire uh, a non-union employee at the same salary, must must our non-union employee at a lower salary than the incumbent, that that's a separate discussion.
Then we should just get rid of the village manager former governor.
Well, and I think it would totally depend on the circumstances, right? I mean, if you lose, if you lose a high-level village employee and need to replace that person with someone of, you know, and a just a similar level of experience and expertise, you wouldn't want to have hamstrung the village manager. No, you can't hire at this same pay scale. It that they have to have discretion in these hiring things. And I know that Jerry has come to us and said, look how I'm saving you money by shifting, you know, when when these people leave and I hire these people, it's saving us money. I I know we've had these discussions. I just don't.
We definitely have.
I don't know that this is a problem that actually exists. That's it just contradicts what the conversations I remember having over the years. But if you know what, if there are specific examples of when this has happened that, you know, are problematic, I'm happy to have that discussion, um, as an executive session item, so we can really get into the details.
And and, you know, and then I'm sure that there, it, it, listen. I don't know where it's happened, but if someone was hired at the same level as someone who left, there might be a very good reason for that. And I I don't know if that should be, if there should be a policy of this board tying the village manager's hands. And when we're already tied. And it would help if there were backups to what you, what, what, what you wanted to talk about. All right. Dan, you wanted to talk about one N before.
Yes, the county has the mitigation plan update. Uh, I've attached a memorandum and the village's supplement to the draft hazard mitigation plan. Uh, just to kind of circle back to, uh, the item that, uh, trustee Lucas mentioned about the storm sewers. Uh, part of the update process, uh, involved a stakeholder survey uh, that went out countywide. There were a number of responses in the village that kind of fell into a couple of categories. First was uh, flood mitigation that would be, uh, improved by the Army Corps Plan. Uh, flood mitigation or flood issues related to, uh, uh, coastal flooding, which is is a different animal unto itself. Uh, and then, uh, flooding related to areas with poor drainage or areas that wouldn't be benefited by the Army Corps Plan. And one of the proposed projects I included, uh, in the supplement based on those survey responses was to, uh, conduct an engineering study of those areas to identify them and provide conceptual projects and budget estimates for capital projects to improve flooding in those areas. So it was something we, I I did try to address in, uh, the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Uh, the, in general, uh, the village, uh, has had or been involved in a hazard mitigation plan since 2012. The village adopted its own, uh, plan in 2012. Uh, we, uh, hopped on to the county plan in 2015. Uh, by law, plans have to be updated every five years. Uh, that meant that the county plan expired in 2020. Uh, a lot of things were supposed to be done in 2020, but because of the pandemic, things, uh, didn't get done. Uh, the county essentially got a one-year extension of the timeframe in which to complete their update. Uh, it's been a very aggressive process, uh, for the last several months. Uh, I've, you know, had items on the agenda. Uh, I provided the draft of the draft update at the last meeting for the village, um, with various projects. Uh, there is a link for the county plan included with the agenda. And like I said, a hard copy of the village supplement is attached. Uh, in terms of what this means for the village, uh, in order to be eligible for certain hazard mitigation grant programs, uh, the village must have a hazard mitigation plan or be a part of a hazard mitigation plan. Um, if we are not part of an active approved hazard mitigation plan, the village isn't eligible for those grants, which include, uh, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, the Flood Mitigation Action Program. Uh, there's the brick programs, I think it's Building Resilient Infrastructure Communities or some other acronym of the week that the federal government has, uh, come up with. Um, it also helps with other grants that we apply for to demonstrate that, uh, mitigation is a active, uh, effort that the village partakes in. Uh, the county is looking to submit their plan to FEMA, uh, I believe, uh, in December. Uh, and they've asked the participating municipalities to adopt their resolution, uh, in advance of the FEMA review. So it's kind of the, the short version of hazard mitigation.
Thanks, Dan. So is the proposed resolution that is part of our backup, is that, um, like a county template that we're following?
Uh, it is the template that, uh, I use based on the resolution that, uh, the board first adopted in 2012, uh, and then again in, uh, 2015. Um, we actually deviated slightly from, uh, what the template was at the time because, uh, when, uh, trustee Lucas was Citizen Lucas, I recall she mentioned, uh, something about the seeker language, uh, in in the resolution. So we modified the resolution to, uh, give us a little more flexibility.
But we know that this, um, this is, this formula works.
Absolutely.
Great.
We're two for two so far.
Two for two. What is the score position? Uh, okay. It's on for regular meeting. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Thanks, Dan. I know this was a lot of work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
Okay, on, uh, one N, hold on, let me try this. Okay, uh, adoption of agenda. A couple of months ago, the three members of the board voted to, uh, add adopting agenda to the agenda. Uh, I have contacted over twenty communities in Westchester County, uh, and I stopped after twenty, uh, and none of them do it. Uh, a couple of mayors asked, why would you do it? Uh, John Mancini from Nikon knows of no community that does it. Uh, we were talking about this, so, you know, I I I was led to believe that other communities had done it. I can't find one who does it. Uh, I've been on many boards, uh, both public and private, and I've never seen it done before. I think this is a step that we've added that you know, is just another cause for, uh, this harmony. Uh, I think that if we just do what we've been doing by keeping things dated and going down the, uh, old business via dates, uh, that would work out just fine. I I don't think it requires a a meeting to adopt the agenda at the opening of every meeting. It it just, it's, it's just duplicative. I would ask that we go back to the way it was. Yes, Kelly?
Um, I, I agree with you. I as, I have a couple of other concerns, which is, you know, this, what didn't come up when we discussed this before, um, was that, you know, the open meetings law requires us to make public our agenda three days in advance. So to the extent this is. So to the extent this is some mechanism to change that. I'm not sure it comply, you know, is consistent with what's required under the open meetings law. And in practice, what we've done in the past, if we need to add something at the last minute past publication. Is we have to have a majority of the board agree to amend the agenda and add that item. And we, we do that, we do that. It is, we do it.
We do a council.
The, we do it all the time. Um, to the extent we're looking for a way to impose an order in the agenda. That as a practical matter doesn't happen, because as we see tonight, we have a number of items under new business, which we haven't even started yet. Which are on for regular meeting because of the necess- necessity of the, the timing, the urgency of the matter. And so, you know, I know that as Tom runs the meeting, as we get close to our end time, if we are close and we, we haven't reached these items. Everything else goes to the side and will go to those items to make sure that we're taking care of business that has to be taken care of at the regular meeting. So I don't know what the point of this is. No one has ever explained it to me in a way that makes any sense. Other than this is what we want to do and this is what everybody does, which we've now discovered is not the case. Um, and I know that a couple of meetings, we've had this, this ten-minute discussion of how to adopt the agenda. That is an utter waste of time. So, so I really, this, I, I don't understand the utility of this. I think it, it invites discord and it may um. Contradict requirements in the open meetings law. I'm done.
And all the discussion, the whether.
I, I mean, I, I don't think it needs to invite discord. I think the discord is, is entirely unnecessary around this. I think since we've been doing this, our agenda has been more orderly. We've gotten through more of the items. And um, I think it's a good opportunity to check in and make sure we've got everything right. We have had agenda items that have lingered for nearly a year. So I don't think this exercise is at all academic. And I think we should keep on doing it until we've really figured out how to keep our, at least until we figured out how to keep. To our agenda and move an agenda.
Just let me point out that a lot of times our agenda was uh. Backlog because, you know, trustees would say, oh, this has to be done right now. And I would move that to the front of the agenda. You see what Nora, that is the thing, I'm still talking. And, you know, so. Tonight, we have a lot of things that we talked about, but has to stay on the agenda, right? So the agenda, while we're getting, we, we, we're moving along through it, you know, the, the, a lot of things aren't coming off this agenda. You know, this hasn't, there, there's nothing that's changed because we, we, we've had this discussion about adopting the agenda. You know, this is the way, you know, I don't mind having a date and doing a chronological. I think that that's fine. And I would stick to doing that either way. But uh, you know, there's been things that have jumped the line, you know, uh, last year, a few items jumped the line because you, you wanted to get things on the agenda. Uh, so you could have a vote uh, to take away mayoral powers. That, that, that was a paramount at the time, right? And that, that pushed things back like the fifty-foot law. Uh. But. I don't see how this helps. It, 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 it is, you know, this was. This was, you know, at, at first touted as, you know, many other places do it. No one does it. Yeah, I, I found no one who does it. And uh, it, it just, I, I, I would ask that we go back to the way it was and, you know, take this unneeded step off. But I, I don't, I'm not going to be here all night debating it because I, I don't think there's going to be anybody that supports me.
Well, I mean, I think that the agenda has been more um, effective and, and meaningful. Because of the use of bold-faced font and because of dates that have been added. And now we're going to add something more, which is, you know, staff awaiting staff approval. I mean, those are all useful pieces of information to have on our agenda, but they have nothing to do with a vote at the beginning to adopt the agenda. I mean, I'll just point out, we're zipping along tonight and we didn't adopt the agenda. You know, Victor wasn't here at the opening of the meeting, and so we didn't adopt the agenda.
And that's happened a few times.
If I may, I actually agree with Nora and I think even with the implications that you've just said, Kelly. And actually, the mayor today just, just made a great move when he said, which is actually something I thought was obvious. That if there's, there's no information there, we, we shouldn't, we should actually recognize it right away or it should be in the agenda. But there's something very clear. It is organized our work. It is not just organized, but it's the basic, basic rule. That everybody is agree, agrees on what they're going to work on. Things were getting really out of place. Things were being in disorder. Things were, there was no rhyme or rhythm. Not even, it wasn't clear whether our own rules were being followed. This is the basic rule of any organization in a democratic system from the UN downward, downwards. If you, and now it forces us to, to have an agreement on what you're working now. For example, if you didn't adopt the agenda, which I think, because now we're actually following it. So you've impliedly adopted it. Which I think is great. So let's move on with this rule. It actually made, made us, made us better. And, and as, as, if staff is, is either telling us what they have ready or not. The mayor can move things, things quickly and, and then we can all, uh, if we need something to move around, we will. Otherwise, we will work in an orderly way. And well, you can keep laughing everywhere, everywhere you like, Kelly, but I think.
I'm not laughing, I, I just.
You are, you are, but in a way, I think this, you are. I, 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 I support this. I think it's been, it's, it's been a good advance. I know when people vote against it, then you want to work against it. But actually, now it's clear that it's moving forward and I really want to move things ahead. I, I, I think it. It should be changed.
Okay. You, you, I'm, I'm fine with moving ahead. I realize I don't have uh, support on this. But you keep saying that there's all these other governments that do it. I, I would encourage you to show me one. And you.
Go, go to any, any agenda of the UN system. There's five hundred or more. Go to any, go to any of them.
Okay.
I, I'll just leave you.
We are as far from the UN as, as the earth is from Pluto, you know.
Any. Many NGOs, they all.
There is no place in New York State that does this. There is no place in Westchester County that does this. You alleged in the beginning that everybody was doing this, and that is just not the case.
It's a basic rule. Go to. Everybody has to agree on what they're going to work on.
No, Rick.
Look at our rule.
It's not a basic rule. Just because you're alleging it doesn't make it's true. I've checked. I've done my homework, Victor. I've done my homework. I, I went to Nikon. You see what Nikon says? I went to twenty communities around us. Now, we're not going to do it, that's fine, but please stop saying that this is.
Homework. I'm telling you all the places where you can find it.
It is just not, Victor. And, and saying the UN is just, yeah, I don't.
NGOs, what do you mean discussing?
I've been on NGOs and I've never done it.
I see, okay. Well, I think we're moving, we're making progress. So let's, let's continue that.
Deal with the same facts, though. Smoking policy in parks. Why don't we just make no smoking in every park?
Anywhere, like not carve out a special place to go light up.
Any park and just be done with this.
I, I like that idea. I would support that, Tom. I think that's great.
Is everybody fine with that? No smoking in any park of any substance.
Period.
Yeah, or vaping, or vaping.
Well, vaping is fine.
Or vaping. Yeah, I think make it as simple as possible.
Then you're done.
Understand. So we need to amend our local laws to do this.
Bob? Bob Spalzino?
Correct.
No smoking in any park. We have a law that says that.
Bob, is there a problem with doing that?
I don't believe so. Okay, let's do it.
Well, here's the other question. What about streets?
I don't think you can do it on the streets.
You mean, you don't think we can regulate it on the streets?
Yeah.
That's what you're saying.
Can, Bob, can we?
Well, I don't know, then you're.
I mean, I'm saying it might be a separate law so that we don't delay this law any longer.
But I, I, I can tell you this, you're not allowed to smoke in my apartment complex. So everybody goes out on the sidewalk and smokes.
Right. And like restaurants send people out to the sidewalk to smoke.
So, I mean, I, I, as an ex-smoker, uh, I mean, I, if, if they're not allowed on the sidewalk to smoke. They're going to, they're going to sneak smokes in the apartment. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I hear what you're saying, then, Nora. I mean.
Yeah, I understand it too, but.
I think we got some complaints about it in the public hearings recently.
Yeah.
You, enforcing, enforcing a smoking ban in a public park is a lot easier than enforcing a smoking ban on, on public streets.
Yeah, I don't know anybody who does that.
Yeah, and just kind of answer trustee Natchez's question, uh, based on, and I'll defer to the attorneys. But I think that the state public health law says that uh, we can adopt local laws, which are more restrictive. Than what the state law allows. We just can't adopt a local law less restrictive than what the state public health law allows.
Okay. So, we got that one. We got, we got a law on the way.
Yeah.
Uh, communication from the flood uh, mitigation advisory committee. You know, why don't we have them come at the next work session? Because I think that they really appreciate that. Is that okay with everybody?
It's fine. I, I think it's, this is, this dates from September twenty-first. So by that point, it will be, you know, nearly three months. So I, it would be great if we could get some of the answers to these questions so we could, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I can uh, work with the, the building department and uh.
What's the first meeting? What's the date of the first meeting in December, regular meeting?
September thirteenth.
I'm sorry, what?
Thirteenth.
Okay, I, I, I am running the meeting, running a Zoom tomorrow night. I'll let them know, December thirteenth.
If you're going to invite them, rather, why don't we, can we move that to the top for inviting people?
Yeah, yeah. That's what we always do, when, when, uh.
But then, then the agenda should read that way into.
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll do that for the next agenda. Thank you.
The mayor says you're running their meeting. Are you the new liaison, maybe?
No, he's saying he's running it tomorrow. We have an organizational meeting the first Monday in December where we all, where we do this. So he's running the one tomorrow.
Okay.
Are you the liaison, correct?
I am.
Community refrigerator. Mr. Natchez?
Um, I think it's self-explanatory. Um, I met these people at the community fair. Uh, it makes a great deal of sense. Um, it's worked very, very well in other communities. Uh, certainly would have been nice if we could have done this months ago, but it's still time-late. And it's still very important to do, and I think we should move ahead quickly on it.
Where would you want to put it?
Well, uh, the, originally, uh, you know, we thought it would go, be good to put it by the firehouse. Uh, because there's a lot, it's in the center of everything and there's a lot of traffic to try and foot traffic. Try and make sure things don't get misused. Um, it's been, somebody suggested that we put it up by. Uh, the new home for the, um, by, you know, um, Barry Avenue and Maronic Avenue. Uh. But, uh, I don't know that, you know, I mean, that's why I sent it to staff asking if they had any other recommendations. Um, but I think that, you know, anything that is visible in, within the reasonable area. Uh, in walking distance makes a great deal of sense.
Well, the, I don't you tell me, there's a, there's a lot next to the volunteers' firehouse, but I think that they use that for talking.
I wasn't, I wasn't. On the lot, Tom, I'm talking on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I know, but it's got to plug into something, right? What, what about, you know, where uh. Used to be the Christmas tree there uh, in, in Washingtonville. Uh, it's like a little, it's, it's right when it painted the Black Lives mural, there's a, there's a little island. Uh, before you went to Van Rans from a Maronic Avenue. Uh, so my thinking is they probably have electricity there because they used to have, they used to have the Christmas tree there.
I, I would be concerned about putting it anywhere that where people didn't have to make sure that they're crossing a road, you know, that has traffic. You know, uh, as mandatory, uh, to use it. I think that that is um. Not, you know, yeah, well, whatever. Uh, but, you know, putting it next to a building that, you know, where we can draw the um, electricity from, that's fine. I think that, that makes a great deal of sense.
Nora, what we said?
I have two suggestions. One, I think maybe we could um, check with the CRC to see if they had a good, a good location. I know it can't be, they're not going to be open for business, but that might be an option of a location. And the other is, um, the food pantry is moving to the building on Barry. I mean, near Barry, uh, on the Maronic Avenue. And now that on um, on the, on the fresh produce Saturdays. They, they have, they need to get a bunch of volunteers who drive things to the Mont Haven fridge or to the one in the Bronx. So it, you know, it might be a naturally, it might be a natural link to check it out and.
I think you hit the nail on the head there, the food pantry.
And it's pretty easy to figure out, you know, how much electricity costs, you know, for these refrigerators. So maybe that the village would be able to, you know, underwrite the electrical cost of it. Yeah, it was not.
Yeah, as soon as I saw the emails about the food pantry getting a permanent location, I thought that the refrigeration. Um, you know, linking this to their new location makes a lot of sense.
They would know what would be best to put in a pantry, in a refrigerator, to what people need the most.
Yeah, and I, I don't know what type of power we have out there, because those are regular uh, LED streetlights and all the decorators that have the uh. Uh, the outlets on them.
Well, the, the food, the food pantry is moving immediately. I mean, they're going to be up.
They're going to be up December first.
Yeah, so maybe we can work with them.
I'll reach out to the food pantry, let them know.
It, it, it should be against a building and not freestanding. That, that's what the history has shown.
Yes.
They have their building yet.
No, no, I understand that, right? But I think what Dan was saying, by a streetlight or, you know, a post is not going to be as, as um. As desirable is what I'm trying to.
I, I was just trying to address the question about uh, uh, the village underwriting the power. I just don't know what power we have out there.
No, she meant underwriting.
No, I meant the cost of it. I meant the cost.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
Sorry, I meant the cost. It would be hooked in whatever their electric is and.
Okay.
We're asking a favor. We shouldn't. Impose a burden.
Well, yeah.
It, it might be in, right, totally in line with their mission now, so, you know. And, you know, we, we've been great partners to them and they've been great partners to us.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to Bob about the uh, underwriting the cost because that could be probably come very close to the gifts and loans clause. But uh, that's, I guess, a separate conversation with the attorneys on that.
Yep.
Lovely. Yeah. Well, you know, Columbus, I, I talked to him, Columbus Park has a, it's an issue about bringing food there too, but okay. Somebody emailed me today. Uh, the next item on the agenda is uh, one R R tree scholarships. Uh, this is. You know, something that occurred to me, something that occurred to me is that, you know, when the tree committee. Uh, did their uh, tree survey in the canopy of uh, this community. And how we were uh, lacking uh, in our canopy. Yeah, I mean, in, in some sense, you know, of course, we're going to be a lot less than a, you know, South Salem or someplace like that. That's much more calic, but uh, we could obviously do a lot better. But the people that need trees the most are the people uh, in, in the areas that don't have a lot of land. That don't have uh. You know, soil in their right of ways, the, the right of. you know, soil in their right of ways, uh, the, the right of ways or sidewalk. Uh, so how do you get trees into the areas, uh, where, you know, people are, uh, economically disadvantaged? And, uh, you know, don't have, uh, right of ways that have planting opportunities. And, you know, my suggestion is, is that the village, uh, you know, when, when we buy trees, you know, offer scholarships, uh, to families, uh, who have land backyards, uh, or side yards or front yards to plant a tree, uh, with the proviso that they will take care of it and nurture it. Uh, and, uh, it, it'll help us all. It'll, it'll help that community in particular, uh, which is both grossly plagued by flooding, uh, that, uh, probably, uh, is a few degrees warmer on a hot summer day because they don't have as much shade as a community like, uh, Shore Regis or Oriental or even, uh, Heathclow Hill. Uh, so that was my idea. Is that, uh, you know, we, we, we think outside the box and try and get, uh, foliage in communities that don't have foliage where we really don't have an opportunity or a good opportunity to do plantings.
Well, a- as we're going to see soon, the, the cost of trees went up substantially. So we're planting, we're going to plant less for our same budget than we hoped.
Okay.
But just, the estimate.
It's still a question of where we plant it, right?
Absolutely.
Getting, they're getting, proposal is to plant them. I mean, we'll talk about this where, you know, in places where people have, 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 have agreed to take the trees. Like, so that's the good news. It won't be planted in front of houses where they won't. And this is phase two because that, that list was created before the tree law allowed us to plant on private property before the tree law was adopted. And my own, I think it's a really good idea. My question is, it goes back to gift alone. Are we allowed to give scholarships for tree maintenance? That's a Bob question, I think. Bob and Mark question.
Well, depends on whether you perceive there, you reasonably perceive there to be a public benefit rather than simply a private benefit.
Yeah, well.
I think the argument, I think there's a strong argument that can be made that it is a public benefit.
And that's why we adopted the law.
It's the only way to aid that community. It doesn't have any other opportunities for tree plantings. Either that or you just tell them, you know, it doesn't happen, right?
The village can't fulfill its mission of planting trees in some neighborhoods because the right of way isn't adequate. And that's, that's why we put that in the law. So this is part, if this helps amplify that mission, then I think we should, you know, figure out how to make it work.
Yes, I mean, I, 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 I know that, uh, uh, someone forwarded me an email, uh, from, that was sent to the tree committee about this and about the gift alone, but I, I think that, that, that is a misconception about the gift along that, uh, has, uh, not been, uh, played out under the law. Uh, we saw that with the flagler drive lawsuit. Um, uh, so can you just make sure that we, we'd be on, on a firm ground to do the planting?
I, I would like to, uh, get an opinion from, uh, the controller or the attorney general on it so that we make sure that we're on, uh, firm footing here. Uh, and I think, uh, that would be of tremendous help, but going forward.
I would like our village attorney's opinion first. Thank you. And that's the way it works. And the, the person who sent the email to the, uh, tree committee was Mr. Teager, who was also involved in that flagler thing that I was talking about before.
I don't think that that has anything relevant.
Of course it doesn't.
I have not read, I am not aware of any of that.
Uh, it never does with you.
Tom.
I would like, I would like, I would like our village attorney, who we hired to do the job, to do his job.
Tom, are you done?
Yeah.
Good. Uh, I respect your, uh, right to have your opinion. Uh, I, this has nothing to do with any, anything other than want to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's. Uh, and this is something that is a big concern. Uh, it is to me. Um, and I would like to get an opinion from, by the, I don't, I don't have any concerns or problems with Bob's opinion, but he would be the one who'd be writing the, uh, the attorney general or the controller to find out whether or not this can be done.
Okay. Just let me point out something. When, when, when I looked at this when I was first elected mayor about village attorney, uh, about attorney general opinions, the, the, the information I got from attorney general's office is if you have a village attorney, that's where you get your opinion. If the village attorney doesn't have an opinion, then he can ask. That's what I was informed. You know, tonight we made a decision to ask the village attorney something because the, the attorney general something because there was a conflict between what has happened in this community and what that attorney general said in nineteen seventy-three. So.
And so what I.
See now, I was, I was still talking. Thank you.
I said, I apologize.
This, this goes back to, uh, you know, what, what was asked for to get a village attorney's opinion on. I asked our village attorney for an opinion. That is how it starts. If he comes back and says, I don't know, maybe we need help on this, then that's the next step. You want to go to the, to the last step before you've done the first step?
I'm trying, I believe they can be done concurrently. It's, I'm talking. Uh, it's not a question of calling Bob's, uh, opinion into question. It is, this is the big, this is a big issue from my vantage point. Uh, you know, uh, making sure that we have dotted our i's and crossed our t's. Um, and I, you know, uh, that's, that's why I'm asking for.
You know, I, I think you're kind of talking around the question or, or the, I think the obvious perception here in asking for the controller's office to weigh in is that, you know, in some way, you're not satisfied with the village attorney or don't trust his work. That's the concern. That's the morale issue that I'm concerned about. And the fact that, you know, and, and it's just a little too coincidental that this is something that, you know, Ms. McCrory, Ms. McCrory wanted done on the flagler drive issue. I mean, it's just like, here we go again. This is a problem in the village. I mean, just, it's a problem, Dan.
Again, Kelly, I respect your opinion, but I just, I disagree. It has nothing to do with what anybody else has said. It is, this is something that I feel very strongly on and very deeply, not affected by or influenced by others one way or the other, and not having call into a question, you know, uh, Bob's ability or lack of ability. It is, uh, it is something that if the, you know, that it goes to a very high level of issue, in my opinion.
I mean, I, I don't know why we pay a village attorney. At the last work session, special work session, a majority of this board voted to pay an outside attorney by the hour to write legislation that our village attorney had already drafted for, for two years been working on. I mean, the, just the, I, I don't, I don't understand. I, I really, I, I, it dumbfounds me what we're doing here. It really does.
It, 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 it. I don't know or think that this board can compel the attorney general to give us an opinion before we have asked our attorney for an opinion.
In my discussions with the attorney general's office is they are happy to talk to a village attorney uh, and answer, you know, any requests, but they will not talk with anybody else.
That, that is my point. Dan, you've, you've made my point.
No, I haven't made, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My point is that it's when a village attorney cannot form an opinion and needs help, he goes and asks the attorney general. It's not when a board compels him to do it. That is what I was told. And, and you're, you're, you were probably told the same thing. You're conflating it another way.
No, it's, um, actually just the opposite.
Oh, you said the same thing. So you're not making any sense, Dan.
Well, you're entitled to that.
And don't do that, you're entitled.
You're interrupting, Tom. I'm talking.
I'm sorry, Dan.
I'm talking, Tom.
I am talking. I'm sorry, don't yell at me, Dan.
But you keep interrupting.
I'm sorry, but you keep saying hackneyed, ridiculous stuff. Go ahead.
Well, that, but that's, that's your opinion and my prerogative.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody's entitled to their opinion and you can agree or to agree or we can agree to disagree. But I, when I, in my conversations with both the controller's office and the attorney, and the attorney's general's office was that they want to be contacted by the village attorney on behalf of the community that has been asked to do something.
No.
It's nothing to do with whether that, that attorney has an opinion or a lack of opinion or concern.
No, that, that is not the case. I'm sure that's what you think he said and, but I, I, I thought it's not the case. You can, you can read it and find out. Uh, I mean, what? Kelly and I want the village attorney to give us an opinion, as is his job.
I'm happy for Bob to do it. I'm happy for Bob to reach out to the AG if he thinks that's appropriate. I also would like to know what we used for the kitty. Is this something we can use tree committee funds for? Is this something we can use just regular budget funds for?
I, I would, I would like to, in the budget time, allocate money for this.
Well, we have a, we have a tree fund now for, we haven't, you know, we, or I'll be, set up a tree fund so that once the tree law is passed, so that any fines with the new tree law go and that provides a pot of money that the tree committee can use to expand tree planting. But do we have to qualify how the money is spent? Do we have to hire the people that water and prune? I mean, I think those are, you know, the basic, basic bar seems to be that we're allowed to do this because it's a public benefit. Because in the same way, we can plant trees on public property. How, what is the mechanism for making sure these funds are not only properly allocated, but properly expended? Or do we have to be the people that, does the village have to ensure that they get funded? I think those are questions that I'd like Bob to, now that the tree law is finished and Bob and Mark are resting. I like, they'll, they'll, um, opine on those. And the tree committee's meeting soon. If you want them to talk more about it, I'm sure they've put it on their agenda.
Well, let's make sure it, it, it's something that we're going to do before we make them talk about it. Uh, Bob, could you have that in two weeks for us? Dan, mayor, thank you. Okay. What time is it? Uh, oh, doing good. Six forty-two. Good. Uh. Okay, new business two A, and this is on for the regular meeting. This is basically, uh, just a continuation of the, the, the village gets money, uh, to clear this, this snowplow and to so, salt the state-owned roads. Uh, and adjustment was made based upon the cost that the village incurred. So instead of getting eighteen thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars, we'll be getting twenty-seven hundred dollars more a year. Uh, pretty much almost twenty-seven hundred dollars more a year to do the same job. So it's just that, you know, it's an adjustment in the contract that accrues to our benefits. Does anybody have any problem with that going on the agenda?
I'm curious, it, you know, it doesn't seem to cover the, you know, the cost that we, the increased cost that we have. You know, and then we're anticipating, I mean, everything has gone up, you know, fairly dramatically. Uh, you're talking about, uh, roughly, you know, fifteen percent. Uh, you know, um.
Well, they, the, this accounts for, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, this, this accounts for a two percent increase, uh, in salary for the CSE staff. Uh, also accounts for thirty percent, approximately thirty percent increases for the, uh, salt and the equipment use. So it, it, it does account, and there's a significant increase for, uh, the equipment and the consumables.
And, and this is, this is from a formula they have?
Yeah, the, um, if you look at the attached contract, uh, it demonstrates that they are increasing the, uh, reimbursement for salt by twenty-nine point six-three percent. And the, uh, equipment, uh, they are increasing by, uh, thirty-four, I'm sorry, uh.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one percent. So it's demonstrated in the attached, uh, agreement that the state proper to us what the increases are.
All right. Uh, they're not going to negotiate anyways.
No.
So this, this is what it is. Just be happy we get.
Don't look a gift horse in the mouth.
Yeah. It's on for a regular meeting. Is there consensus for that?
Yes.
Westchester Joint Water Works, uh, joint capital project, uh, Chef twenty-two. Uh, Delaware Aqua독 Chlorination System Project on for a regular meeting. What this is, uh, New York City is the, is decreasing the chlorination, uh, that is coming, uh, into our system, you know, Chef twenty-two, you know, it takes a turn in Yonkers and it comes down toward us. Uh, so they're not putting the chlorine that they were putting in before. So the next stop for chlorination is over, uh, by the Sheldrick Environmental Center over there, uh, off of Weaver. And there's not enough time at that center, uh, for the, the exposure time for chlorination before it goes out into the system. So they're going to have to add, uh, chlorine in Yonkers. There's a building already in Yonkers that we had facilities in time gone past. Uh, we're repurposing that building in conjunction with Yonkers. Uh, and it, we're actually making it better for us and better for Yonkers because instead of using, uh, chlorine gas, uh, which has, you know, uh, sometimes, uh, bad properties, they're changing it to chlorine tablets. And actually that was a, uh, that was a, in the, uh, resolution, it, it should say tablet. Uh, it was a misprint. I'll fix it later on. Uh, so we, you know, that the, the chlorination system, uh, the village's share of that uh, would be two hundred and nineteen thousand. The town of Maric is a hundred and forty-eight and Harrison's is four hundred and twenty-eight thousand. That, that is some substance, uh, what that's all about.
Well, I, I understand we don't have a choice, but if my recollection is correct, this was not in the five-year, uh, capital project plan.
No, it, it wasn't because at that time we didn't know if New York City was going to cut the chlorination.
Tom, can I just ask, so, so New York City is cutting the chlorination. Have they decided that a lower level of chlorination is safe or better? And has the West, does the Westchester Joint Water Works just disagree with that assessment?
No, it, it, it's, they chlorinate now in, in, uh, in Yonkers in the Hillside Avenue. Right? So they decided it's better to add chlorination closer to the source.
Got it.
Dissipate, right? Because it dissipates, it dissipates over the course of, you know, transmission.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, what, you know, when you're going up eighty-seven, there's a reservoir there and you're right. Uh huh. Hillside Avenue Res, Res.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, it's, uh, it's the problem with buying water. But that being said, we have the best water in the world.
Yes, we do.
You, you, you travel a little bit and you realize how good our water is. Uh, everybody find putting it out for a regular meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we have a law law, a la, a letter of map provision, uh, that has to go be added to our flood map. Uh, we don't, we don't make that decision. We just make the decision to add it to our flood map because it's a, it's a mysterious action. Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
You got a problem with that?
Right? Uh, appointment of climate's smart community coordinator on for regular meeting, uh, at, at the, uh, committee for the environment. Committee for the Environment, at their subgroup of the climate smart community. Uh, the, one of the requirements is to have a, somebody appointed coordinator, uh, Ellen Silver. Generously, uh, agreed to do it, although, you know, some communities pay their coordinator, uh, Ellen agreed to do it gratis. Uh, I really appreciate that. And, uh, she's the one who actually should do it. She's really been leading the charge on this. David Freeman nominated her and, uh, the board approved her unanimously. Uh, this will allow her to get started, uh, tomorrow. Is everybody fine with that?
Yes, and thank you to Ellen.
Yeah, she's really, that whole committee is really, uh, they work very hard and I'm impressed with them.
Yep.
Two E. Contract to furnish and install trees on for regular meeting. As you've seen, the price of trees has gone up. Price of everything is, seemed to have gone up, especially things made of wood. Uh, is everybody fine for putting it off for a regular meeting?
You know, I, I am just curious if we think that the price of trees could come down in the spring and if there is any benefit at all to waiting until spring to, to reprice this and maybe get more trees for the money?
We could tell me to see what happened, but the issue is that, you know, we try to, uh, get the trees planted at a certain time of year.
Yeah.
Usually at this time of year and it's going to be, we're going to be cutting it close, but if we get it done, we can get it done. That's a, that's an advantage to, uh, plant as close as you can to the proper time of year.
Well, um, uh, I think Kelly has raised a very good point. I've talked with, uh, you know, different nurseries for different projects that we're involved with and we're postponing everything for a year. Uh, because everybody believes that things are going to come down dramatically and that people are raising prices, some because they need to and others to take advantage of the, uh, supply shortage, uh, supply chain shortage. Uh, so, um, you know, I think it would be uh, behoove us to be more prudent. Uh, we're running very late in the year. Uh, we're sort of borderline at best, uh, for planting. Uh, we should have been doing it earlier. So I think it makes more sense to postpone it and we get a bigger bang for the buck. Uh, so that, you know, uh, it does, so if we're allocating so much money, you know, that doesn't get used, we can add that to the budget for next year.
I mean, you can plant in the spring, can't you?
You can, and, and these prices are are good for the year. Uh, I, I don't know what they, what advantage there would be to plant in the spring, just as far as what the nurseries have available right now. I don't know if that's going to increase much for a spring planting.
Yeah, it, it, it is the thing. We're going to miss a year. There's a good chance we do. If we put it off, we miss a year without planting.
Well, we already have.
Yeah, so we, we'll miss another one.
This past spring. So that I think, I think the reason the tree committee went out down their list was that there have been people who have expressed an interest in having trees planted in front of their house. And there was no planting done last spring. Covid sort of put the catch on, on our, so they didn't do, we didn't do a spring planting. We didn't do a planting last fall. So I think that the tree committee would really like to get this smaller batch of trees in the ground.
Uh, as, as I was saying, also, we, we, we don't know for sure if prices will go down. That's speculation based upon the conversation that Trustee Natchez says he had with the arts unknown. Uh, I don't think that that's the way we do government. Uh, I think that it's imperative to get stuff in the ground. We know it might go up next year, might double next year. You, you can't always wait for the price to come down. That's how nothing gets done. That's how people don't fix their houses.
I, I, I get it, but this isn't fixing a house, it's putting in a tree. And I am just asking, I mean, the, the increase was exorbitant. So I'm asking the question of whether it makes sense to wait. That's all I was doing, asking the question. I, I have another concern, which is, I, I don't, I, I just want to be careful with the language that people were promised trees. I, I don't, I don't think the village has promised specific plantings in specific areas. The village may have said things like, this is a priority for our planting point, we resume planting, but that there weren't promises made for trees, right? No, in fact, the tree committee spends a lot of time getting buy-in from people who live, you know, where, where they're going to plant a tree, even though it's being planted in the village right of way, because the village has been asked on many occasions to remove trees. And in some cases, trees have been damaged because people didn't want them. So the tree committee does a tremendous amount of outreach to find locations where trees will be embraced and supported and not damaged. So. And I appreciate that work. I'm just. On someone's private property, although that's a different, that's a different agreement they can enter into. But they are really looking to find safe locations for trees that are wanted. And, and I agree.
I'm sorry.
And, and I'm grateful for that work. I'm just concerned that the, the language that people were promised trees creates an impression that we may not want to be creating. I, I just want to be careful with the language.
Right, that, right, that they're entitled and, you know.
Right.
But I, I understand what Nora was saying too, that the tree committee is kind of like, uh, remember that the king and the island, the misfit toys, trying to find homes for all the neglected, uh, toys that nobody wanted anymore.
And to the extent there are people or, or, you know, neighborhoods that, that will like trees in their neighborhood, they should definitely reach out to the tree committee because the tree committee, you know, tries to be even-handed in where they go and yes. Tree placement, the right kind of tree. I mean, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a big effort for the tree committee. Um, and it's, I think it's an effort that the staff is, is happy that the tree committee does and not staff. Yes.
Yeah. All right, so is there consensus to put this on for the regular meeting?
I'm against it, but you can do it.
I'm for it. Nora's for it. Kelly, what do you want to do?
Oh, I'll put it on. I assume Victor will want to put it on. Where is he?
He's there. Vic, you want to put it on?
Yes.
Okay, so that's on. Okay, let's, let's get to something that's not on for tonight. Uh, contract streetscape improvements for Waverly and East Prospect, Danny?
Yep, uh, we had the bid opening for this work on the twelfth. Uh, we had twelve respondents, uh, who submitted bids. Uh, the lowest bid was probably from C M C Contractors out of Greenwich, Connecticut. Uh, they just began a very similar project in the town of Amerenix, but we're still, um, you know, checking the references, being sure they're understanding the, uh, the project scope. Uh, so, uh, uh, we'd like to put a resolution for the board on December thirteenth. Understand that the work will likely not begin until spring of twenty twenty-two. Uh, that does not have any impact on our C D B G funding, that money secured and, uh, it'll be spent in a timely fashion.
Any other questions or concerns?
No. Um, Dan, I'm just curious, is this price like comparable to what this company had done for the town?
Um, I, I believe so. Um, I, I do know that, uh, in, uh, both cases, uh, if you, you'll look at the memo, the second low bid was about ninety thousand dollars more than, uh, the low bid.
Yeah.
In the town's case, it was the same, uh, difference in terms of money. Maybe a slightly higher percentage higher though. So I mean, this is about, uh, thirty-three percent higher. I think in the town's case, the second low bid was forty-five to fifty percent higher. But I think C M C, they've been around since, uh, twenty fourteen. Uh, but, uh, you know, they're starting to move into the municipal workspace. So I think they're, the, the, the bid may be emblematic of their desire to, uh, get municipal work done.
Thank you.
Is everybody fine for putting that on December thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, you know what? We had an advice accounts executive session, uh, P B A negotiations, but I think we need Jerry for that because he's been involved in that. So why don't we just hold all that off until the next time? Maybe tonight, everybody go and have a nice dinner. And
Free.
And come back fresh as a daisy. Uh, at eight, just to remind you, we're going to have swearing in of police officers, uh, sergeants at eight. That shouldn't take more than a few minutes. So an entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'll, I'll join, I'll just join briefly this evening because I'll have to move into something quickly after that.
Okay.
See you later.
Thank you.
Oh, get me on here. I spent that much. One minute. All right, I'm on here, right? Over there. Come on.
Yes.
There you go. Start to stand up. Good evening, and welcome to the Village of Mamarone Board of Trustees meeting for November 22nd, 2021. I need a motion to open this meeting.
So moved.
All in favor of opening this meeting?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is adopt of agenda. Will we get any feedback?
Pledge.
Okay, I should do it. Thank you. An emotional adoption of the agenda.
There's, there's, there's something missing.
What's missing?
The trees, the tree contract. That we talked about. It said it was on for the regular meeting, but it's not. Or I can't find it.
Okay, when we, when we get to that, uh, when we make a motion to edit. That's how we usually add items to the agenda.
So for, um.
Like we'll go, uh.
H and I?
Yeah, exactly, Nora. Okay?
Okay.
All right, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
As amended.
Yes. It was a second.
Nora has amended.
Okay, okay, call roll. Trustees, Winter?
No.
Matches?
Yes.
Lucas?
As amended, yes.
The four?
Yes.
May Murphy? No. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a swearing in of newly appointed sergeants. The other night, the Village of Mamarone promoted four patrol persons to the position of sergeant. And tonight, uh, we're going to, uh, swear in, uh, these, uh, fine young gentlemen who will now be sergeants in the Village of Mamarone Police Department. And the first up is Officer Gad Leon. Officer, would you please come and have your family?
Do, do we do the allegiance to the flag first? No?
What?
Pledge.
Yeah, we're, we're doing this first. Does your family want to come in? No? Okay. While we're here, let's just do the pledge of allegiance.
Okay.
I. Pledge of allegiance.
We've been certified of the United States.
Which stands one nation under God. With liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all. Amen.
I.
I, just.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamarone.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamarone.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of sergeant.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of sergeant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Good luck to you, Sergeant. Thank you for everything you've done for this community and everything you will do in the community. If you, you're, you're a great officer, you're going to be very excited.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that your daughter?
That's my oldest daughter and my wife.
I know you have another child?
I have four.
You have four, okay. These are village of Mamarone Kings that I hear are very collectible. Give them to all the kids. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You should be very proud of them.
We absolutely are.
Thank you. And the next up is Officer Juan Gonzalez. Yes. You can get on either side of the officer around the flag. Come on in, folks. We can all, we can all fit in here. Hi, sweetie. Officer Gonzalez, congratulations on your promotion. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I, Juan Gonzalez.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamarone.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamarone.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of sergeant.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you for everything you have done for this community and will do in the future. God bless you, stay safe.
Thank you.
Young lady. There's a little hint for you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The fine young man, thank you very much for letting him to us.
Very proud of him.
He's coming along nicely, as we say in the job.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is probably the best part of the job. Hi.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, Sergeant, how are you?
Very well.
Lovely family, please.
Thank you so much.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, hi sweetheart. Good morning. Come on in. Stand by daddy. Hey, daddy's going to need his right hand, so hold his left hand. This is his left, right? Okay, you got it. Congratulations on your promotion, Sergeant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Please raise your right hand. So repeat after me. I.
I. Jeremy Carter.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamarone.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamarone.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of sergeant.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Sergeant, thank you for everything you have done for this community and will do in the future. God bless you and stay safe.
Thank you, sir.
Young lady. This is for you, this is a little hint. Can you put on your school name or something?
Thank you, sir.
And when this little fellow gets older, he can have one too to commemorate the time your daddy got sworn as a sergeant.
Thank you so much. You're happy, thank you. Thank you. Take this with you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye, honey. Next, Sergeant Banquith.
Sir.
How are you?
Good, how are you, sir?
I'm good, sir. You're a product of my neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, Rich Bell Roadman. One of the owners, we say, and grandma used to say. Sir, please repeat after me. I.
I.
Repeat your name.
Andrew Banquith.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamarone.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamarone.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of sergeant.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you very much for everything you've done for this community and will do in the future.
Thank you very much.
God bless you, stay safe. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
For giving us such a fine young man. Good luck. The Village of Mamarone. The Village of Mamarone is blessed to have young, young folks like that looking out for us. May they all stay safe. Be happy. Okay. First item on the agenda is communication to the board. There is no public hearing tonight. Are there any communicants? Two people have their hand up. Let's go to Mr. Queros.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Queros.
Good, good evening. Mr. Mayor, when, when, uh, two issues, two comments. When Mayor, Mr. Mayor, when Greg Cuddler left the job of village planner, you hired a black individual by the name of William Long. Why did he leave so quickly? And who is the village planner now?
The village is using an outside firm to do planning at this juncture, and I am not going to talk about why an employee left or why an employee stayed. That's privileged information.
Okay. A few police officers were now given promotions. You just sworn in. There wouldn't, uh, two things. It would have been nice to see them, their faces on the screen so we know what they look like and who they are. They were like dots on the screen, and it's important to have facial recognition, especially with police officers. Considering that the police commissioner is, uh, so had minimal education and has no education in issues of diversity. And the educational demands for what it is to be a police officer in the village is, uh, it's a sad case.
Okay, I, I, I'm not going to allow our village employers to be denigrated. We have.
I'm not denigrating.
Yeah, you are. We have police officers who wasn't qualified.
I just wanted to see their faces. I said I wanted to see their faces.
We're doing the job in exemplary fashion.
How would that dissintegrate? I just wanted to see their faces, what they look like.
But then you had to make other comments.
Related to the chief, not the people you just promoted.
But that, and that's who I'm defending, is the chief, who's done an exemplary job.
I have, are you debating that she's highly educated?
You need to stop.
I don't need to stop. I think we need to know that.
You know, you can say whatever you want. You're not going to be here denigrating our employees who are doing the next.
Not denigrating.
No, you are. You know.
I'm not denigrating because she's the one that's black.
You're saying that education, and education does not equate to doing a good job.
Oh, it doesn't?
I'll never forget that some of the most highly educated people who ever sat in government all came from Harvard and Yale, got us into the Vietnam War and couldn't get us out. The best and the brightest, they called.
Wow. Word of statement, word of statement. It doesn't work like that with minorities.
There, there, there's, there's been books that have been written about that.
Yeah, I wrote, I wrote those books too, and I taught it.
Thank you. Just put on Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, trustees. A couple of items. The, um, it's been off the agenda for whatever reason for a couple of months. But what's going on with the leaky roof with the courthouse and the police station? When it was reported, it was saying it was doing major damage to the courthouse. We also had, uh, in the capital budget to redo Village Hall. At some point, are we going to look at redoing Village Hall and getting the, uh, the roofs replaced there? Number two, you brought up making it illegal to smoke in any park in the Village of Mamarone. That's fine and good, but you have to, um, you can't have a, uh, you can't be handing out tickets and turn smoking in a park in the village in Mamarone to the equivalent of a Terry stop for police to identify in order to give tickets out. You should put in a policy. You don't want smoking in the parks. You could have the Rangers go and tell somebody to take, put the, put the, uh, cigarette, whatever they're smoking out, warn them that they're not allowed to smoke in the parks. What I don't want to see is this perceived as an excuse for interactions with minorities, turning them to a Terry stop where, because I was smoking in the park and not aware of the law, that I'm going to be identified by the police. And I'm sure that if you speak to your Black Lives Matter community and the Hispanic community, they will tell you the same thanks. Number three is, um, well, I'll just leave it for those two for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Have a good night. Order the bills. Yeah, my order of bills here. Tonight's ordered vouchers are eight hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars and two cents. But I have any questions, concerns?
I have one question, not about specifically about the bills, but the total cost. Is the turkey trot, uh, break even or profitable, or do we put it as a loss? And?
I, I can, I can give you the answer on that tomorrow.
Okay, that would be helpful. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. And then I just want to point out the turkey trot was an enormous success this year. Everybody had a great time.
I would tell you, it was fantastic and probably the best run time that they've ever done in the organization of checking was fantastic.
Any other questions about the order of bills?
I have one.
You won?
I have one. Can you hear me?
I think you said you won the turkey trot.
No, Tom, you saw me there. I was not running. Yeah. I made that one up. Yeah. No, I held a sign. That's all I did.
You did well. You did well.
I held the sign very well, so the winner could break it. Yes, with Donna, we were great. Um, I have a question on page five, and it's just, it's ready shred. Um, did I miss the community shredding day?
Yes, community shredding day was, uh, two weeks ago during the harbor.
You're doing the cleanup.
For the cleanup. Okay, thank, well, okay.
And, and I was, I was by there for a couple hours and they were going great guns.
Thanks, okay.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay, need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fusco, please. Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
The old business, new business, uh, resolution adopting harbor on fee schedule. The board went over these fees. The last meeting, we decided to, uh, raise fees ten percent on out of towners and I believe seven percent on residents. If anybody's been down at the harbor, you could see that we installed all the docks with new cleats on the docks. And it's just a much improved situation. That all, we're in a process of doing all of this. A lot of new docks. Questions or concerns?
I'll just add that this is an effort to bring our dock fees more in compliance with neighboring shore community dock fees that we have been undercharging.
That's correct.
I have one concern on the contract on number twelve. I don't have a problem with the charge, but it doesn't say how it, you know, what the additional work is for, and I think we need to do that for. We, we need to have some explanation, so they can, if it.
I, I can, I can look at that with, um, uh, Mr. LaRusso and Neil DeShore's office.
Yeah, no, we, we discussed this at the meeting and we got a clear explanation, but that's not in the contract. It just simply says there's going to be a different fee and it doesn't say for what.
Okay, we, we can make sure that, that's done properly.
No, I don't have any problems.
Yeah.
Okay, then, need a motion to adopt the fee schedule.
So move.
A second.
What we seen on? Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Aye. Uh, the next up is a resolution to schedule a public hearing on the adoption of a flood map change. We don't make the changes. We just have to document the changes that are made. And put it in our book of where is a flood map? Uh, so this would be scheduling a public hearing to do that on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and this is just to schedule the public here. Anybody want to make that motion, please?
It's public law. I, so moved.
A second.
Augustin, please. Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Aye. This is a donate, next item is, uh, three, four, C. It's a donation of the bench in Harbor on Park from, uh, Ms. Yang, uh, in the memory of her parents and grandparents. Uh, and the bench is two thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents, and we appreciate the donation. And we thank her for the, the Mr. Yang, I'm sorry, we thank Mr. Yang for his generous gift. Uh, any questions or concerns? I'll make the motion.
A second.
Oh. Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Aye. Uh, Westchester Joint Water Works Resolution accepting Westchester Joint Water Works Capital Project Chef twenty-two chlorination system. We talked about this. Pardon me, at the work session. The, the city of New York, who we buy the water from, is decreasing the chlorination that comes into our system. So we need to boost the chlorination as the water travels from Yonkers basically to your tap. Uh, we have a chlorination system in effect, but you know, since New York City has decreased their chlorination, we need to have another area where we can add it so that it doesn't dissipate during the transition time. Uh, and the, the place will be in Yonkers. We're doing this in conjunction with Yonkers. And the only change I have is the, the second to the bottom, whereas, whereas the project involves the installation of, it should be tablet chlorination, not table chlorination. And that's the only change I have. And it's just a, a Scrivener's error, as Mr. Sornoff likes to say. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
No.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
A second.
Mr. Fusco. Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
The next up is a resolution, uh, adopting the twenty twenty-one Westchester County Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Westchester County has a hazard mitigation plan that superseded the Village of Mamarone. Uh, so for us to be a hazard mitigation community, we have to buy into their plan. Mr. Sornoff, do you have anything to add to that? I know you dealt with this.
No, nothing, just in that, uh, fourth whereas clause, it's the hazard mitigation plan, not the hard mitigation plan.
I'm sorry, I, I lost it. The fourth whereas?
It's the hazard mitigation plan, not the hard mitigation plan. The second line of the fourth whereas clause.
Right, okay. Not the hard, okay, gotcha.
Yep.
So that's another Scrivener's error?
That's a Scrivener's error that I, I made twice. This is the third time we, I'm using this resolution.
All right. With that change, would anybody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, you please. Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Aye. Resolution authorizing execution of sup, of supplement to snow and ice agreement. Because of our costs increasing, uh, the Village of Mamarone, like every community around here, has state highways that we maintain the snow and the ice, uh, because, you know, it's just easier for us to do it than the state to, uh, send equipment into all these little communities, so the state pays us to do that. So basically, uh, we're going, uh, from eighteen thousand, uh, eighteen thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars to twenty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars, almost two thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollar increase that accrues to us, uh, because our costs have increased. Uh, and that's what the state is giving us to take care of roads, and obviously it behooves us to have Boston Post Road and some of the other major state roads cleaned, uh, one twenty-seven and one twenty-five. Those are important roads in this community. Any questions or concerns? Uh, please, grab a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Augustin. Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Aye. Uh, resolution pointing climate smart communities task force coordinators at the climate, at the, at the inaugural Smart Communities kickoff meeting, uh, there was a resolution by that committee to appoint Ellen Silver as the coordinator. You have to have a coordinator, uh, by, you know, to, to be eligible to participate. A lot of communities pay their coordinator. Uh, Ms. Silver has volunteered to do it gratis. And we appreciate that, and she was, uh, the unanimous choice of that committee, and they passed the resolution asking us to appoint her. Uh, so if there are no questions or concerns, I would make that motion to appoint Ellen Silver, coordinator of the Climate Smart Community Task Force.
Second, with appreciation.
Oh, you please, call roll. Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas? The four?
Yes, we, thanks.
Mayor Murphy? Aye. Item number H is going to be a motion to add an item to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nora, do you want to add the item?
So, yeah, we're adding the, um, resolution.
Item I.
Oh, I, I, item I, um, the resolution that we discussed in work session to plant trees.
Okay.
To authorize the purchase and planting of trees.
Got you. I will second that.
Now, Beverly Sharid from the Tree Committee is on and raising her hand.
Okay, uh, you made the motion. I seconded. Oh, you called on, call him, Miss Sharid.
I'm muted, sir.
I'm muted now, I think. Can you hear me?
Yeah, probably.
Okay, thank you. It's very nice to see you all again so soon. Um, I have to say, first of all, that the prices that came in with that bid on Thursday were a shock to everybody, including the Tree Committee, and we responded by immediately cutting the list of sites for this year from a hundred and thirty, which was totaling a hundred and ten thousand dollars at the new prices to thirty-six, which came in for a projected total of a little bit more than twenty-eight thousand dollars, less than the thirty-five thousand dollar budget. Um, two months ago, I was here talking to you about how important it is to protect mature trees. Is they're essential for the present and the next few decades, but I also mentioned that we need to build for the future by planting new trees. And I know the village has had in the last ten years, we've done a really good job of planting really robustly, a hundred and eighty to two hundred trees a year, which has done a lot to catch us up. Um, nevertheless, we have a twenty-five percent canopy cover, which is very low. And a lot of that has to do with the ten years or so, judging by my own street, before. And a lot of that has to do with the ten years or so, judging by my own street, before, before this planting period, when I don't, I was not aware of any particular street tree planting that was going on alone. And so trees died or were removed for other reasons. People didn't like them. And that's how, that's one of the reasons we, we dropped down so low. Really need to keep a flow of new trees coming to build this urban forest. Um, this would be the second time in two years we will have cut our list. We cut it in twenty twenty because of the budget constraints, which made complete sense. And we recognize that we really need to cut it again this year because of this unexpected uh, price increase. We don't actually know when the prices are going to go down again, if they do. And it's entirely possible that we may have to keep our list low for years to come. But I think it's really essential for us to continue building up the inventory of trees so that every year we have a supply of new ones coming in. Some years you get bad weather, some years you get bad trees, some years, you know, all kinds of, too much road salt. I don't know what the reasons could be. But, you know, that's part of the whole process is that you have enough trees entering the system every year that overall, it's going to increase. They're going to grow. They're going to be better. So I really, I really hope that you will let us go ahead with planting these thirty-six trees, all of which were, um, directing to residents who have actually asked for trees. They want them. Often, we, we just put them out and then people might complain about it. They might be pleased. But this time, these are going to people who will really look out for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Augustino, call the roll. Trustees, went to?
Yes.
Natchez?
Uh, I'm voting no, uh, not because I don't think we need the trees, but because the prices are ridiculously high. Uh, and I believe waiting a year would bring that back to normality and allow us to plant a lot more trees with the same amount of money.
Oh, no.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes, and I just, I want to clarify, these aren't going to private residences. They're going to the right of way in front of houses. It's not, but it, it's always nicer when the residents who live near the trees have a good buy-in for them. Yes.
Trustees, the four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? I, I'm happy to vote yes. I, I think that we don't know what's going to happen with trees. They might even go up. Uh, but, you know, the time is always of the essence. Uh, you know, we have a community that needs trees, uh, to safeguard against flooding. And, uh, every day, the climate gets worse. So, uh, half measures available is nothing. Beverly, thank you, uh, to you and your committee, uh, for the hard work you do and for, uh, uh, planting these trees. Hopefully, we'll have a lot more for you in the future. All righty. That concludes the main show. Uh, communication to the board round two. Okay, Glenn, and then, uh, Glenn.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, uh, to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. I hope everybody has, uh, very safe and, uh, prosperous, uh, time with their families. Um, when we come back, I know in December that right now Jerry is working on a list of the amount of damages that was done by the storm, and we're looking at a FEMA recovery. I thought that FEMA recoveries were eighty percent. Are we going to be getting eighty percent or a hundred percent back from FEMA for Ida? And then sometime, uh, in early January, I think that the, uh, board, uh, should look at making adjustments to the budget to reflect how our spending really, uh, is this year. We're going to have some items that are going to be much above what we thought. We have other, other items that came in short. And before you start the next budget season, you should probably adjust this year's budget to reflect exactly how the, uh, numbers are coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Have a good night. Happy Thanksgiving to you too.
Question, was like to answer that question about FEMA, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, should.
Okay, uh, FEMA provides seventy-five percent reimbursement. Uh, in the past, the state of New York has provided, uh, either twelve and a half or twenty-five percent, uh, for the, the total reimbursement. The state of New York has not made an announcement yet on reimbursement Friday. So right now, we officially have seventy-five percent reimbursement.
Thank you. Um, communication to the board, uh, report from the assistant full manager.
Uh, nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, report from clerk treasure.
Yes, Mayor, second half taxes to do honor before January third. The library will have its vote on December eighth, uh, between seven and nine P M.
No, between seven A M. and nine P M.
At seven A M.?
Yeah. And, and that vote is at the library. Not at your regular polling spot. It's at the library. Uh, report from the village attorney?
Nothing from me this evening, Mayor.
But I, I do want to point out that, uh, local law on, uh, trees was filed with the state. So the, the tree law is now in full vigor in the village, right?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. What else we have here? Minutes, uh, commissions, boards and committees, uh, minutes of the board of trustees, work session of November eighth and regular meetings of October twenty-fifth and November eighth. Minutes of the OS Council meeting of September twenty-first, uh, twenty twenty-one. Minutes of the Ethics Board meeting of September twenty-ninth, October twenty-ninth, and November first, twenty twenty-one. And they meet a lot. Minutes of the Budget Advisory Committee meeting of October eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Minutes of the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee meeting of October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, to echo what Glenn said, uh, I wish everyone on the board and everyone who works for the village and in the community, uh, happy and healthy, uh, Thanksgiving time. Uh, hopefully, you know, folks can, uh, see their relatives again if they're vaccinated and safe. I know I'm, uh, I'm going to be with, uh, twenty-two, uh, family members, so that should be a hoot. But we're all getting tested before. We've all been vaccinated. Uh, hopefully, uh, in the future, we'll all be back to, uh, normal holidays. But, uh, slowly but surely, I think we're getting there. So I just want to wish everybody a, a healthy, happy Thanksgiving. We all have much to be thankful for. Uh, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Good Thanksgiving. Bye.
Bye.
Good night.